We have no answer coming out of the executive session. So we reach the question here where we welcome public participation. If there's anyone who would like to address the board. The policy should be on the call. If not, let me just refresh my mind. You have two minutes. Our board clerk will alert you when you're approaching the two minutes. It's another conversation. And if there's anyone who'd like to address the board of this structure, please come forward. Okay, seeing no takers. Go right into approval of the minutes. Honored to hear a motion to approve the minutes of April 4th. Any additions or corrections to minutes? Oh, I'm sorry.
I didn't see you.
My name's Justin Miley. I was here with my wife, Monica, and I just wanted to ask on behalf of my daughter, Brooklyn. She's a 10th grader that we homeschool right now. She went to Edson School and then up to the 5th grade and then we, personal circumstances, we had to start homeschooling her. And she's at a point now in her education, she was interested in the BOSI's program. I talked to superintendent about this and we're just trying to get that going along. But I was told it's never been done before, that homeschoolers aren't allowed to go to BOSI's. And I would like her to have that opportunity. And I wasn't sure exactly how that's able to happen. I was talking to the principal last because the superintendent was going to talk to him, see if there was openings, but the principal just told me that of Kingston High, we send her reports to the high school for her every quarter so they know that Brooklyn's there, but homeschooling. And they said that they've never done that in the past, so they just don't do that. And he said that he saw a website where there's some sort of legislation that says no part-time students can take any classes, which I don't think really applies to her. She's a full-time student, taking courses, does very well, she's self-motivated, and she's just interested in other opportunities for herself to be able to take advantage of this BOSI's program, which seems to be a shut door for her, which I think is kind of weird for her that she can't go to that program even though she would like to pursue that.
I think you should probably address your intern in writing to the superintendent. And...
I've had two meetings with him already.
I'm sorry?
I've had two meetings with him already.
So you had him in writing? But I believe the policy is that the decision should return to, you can't go to the state education program. And the addresses are in the policy. So, you know, you need the policy number.
That would be great. I'm just not sure what, how to pursue this any further. I just, I've had conversations and I've talked to people, I just want to, I feel like I'm out of the loop not knowing where to go with this.
Yeah, I understand.
But I want to do the best I can for my daughter and let her have that opportunity if she can. So, where should I get that?
Call the office and we will get the policy that addresses for it.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board? Okay. Go right to the minutes of April 4th. Do you have a motion in second? Any corrections or additions to minutes? None? Although it's a figure of acceptance of the minutes of April 4th, please say that you're saying aye.
Aye.
Honored to hear a motion for the minutes of April 18th. 18.
Second.
Any additions or corrections to minutes of April 18th? Okay. There are none. Although it's a figure of acceptance of the minutes of April 18th, please say that you're saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Extinctions. Which brings us to the minutes of May 2nd. Any motion?
Second.
Any additions or corrections to minutes of May 2nd? Although it's a figure of acceptance of the minutes of May 2nd, please say that you're saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Extinctions. All right, thank you very much. And now turn the floor over to Dr. Hannah Wiel, the superintendent's report.
Okay, starting with the superintendent's report, I would like to ask, we just here to give the motion on D-54, which is a Fitzgerald Scholarship.
Second discussion.
Excuse me, I just haven't had the work with the microphone. That was just... I'm sitting next to...
All right. So, shall I need the position? Or would you like to extend?
I actually am going to hand over the mic, or the podium, to Bob Bell, who will tell us about the Fitzgerald Scholarship and, more importantly, introduce an award to the scholarship in part two, too.
Good evening, everyone. Earlier this school year, the administration at Kingston High School was contacted with an unusual request. A member of the Kingston High School class of 1943, Dr. William Fitzgerald, had written a letter to Kingston High School from his home in Thailand. Dr. Fitzgerald wished to help sponsor the college education of two graduating seniors who displayed promise in the field of writing. A research scientist and author, Dr. Fitzgerald's life is like something out of a storybook. The son of the late Augustus and Sarah Fitzgerald, for whom the scholarship is named, Dr. Fitzgerald rose to fame in July of 1961 when he survived a plunge over Niagara Falls in a big rubber ball he called "The Plunge Sphere." Dr. Fitzgerald went on to write several books, appeared on television with Johnny Carson, and worked in the fields of science and research. And before I announce the award and the students' names, I just want to give credit to a couple of people that we could not be doing this tonight without, and that is Mrs. Kate Heidecker and Mrs. Tina Montano. So I want to thank them for their help. The Augustus and Sarah Fitzgerald Scholarship Award, in the amount of $10,000 each, goes to Kingston High School seniors, to Moni Morrison, and to Hero Morris. Please come up and step forward.
Okay, so pretty much all bow and welcome here. So, next... Oh!
Okay. So, it's been moved to second. Bob Bell is in favor of accepting, establish what he addresses, and Sarah Fitzgerald is your...
Aye.
Close. Any...
Okay. So our next part of the superintendent's report will be our principal's report, and tonight we'll have Kingston High School's board president.
Thank you. So, real quickly, I have a few presenters tonight. It's hard to believe that that photo is almost a year old. So, real quickly, I've decided to highlight a few programs that we either are expanding on or were new initiatives this year. So, Work-Based Learning is going to first be presented by Tina McGary and her internship program.
I am a Kingston High School social worker. I work with the senior class, and I'm also the internship coordinator for Kingston High School. I took over the internship coordinator position this year in September. After working with five amazing students over the summer, we built a tiny home with a few local builders. Last April, I was asked to kind of put this together with some amazing people in the community, and we decided to go forth with five students who could really use an enrichment program for, over the summer, something to do. They got paid as well. They got transportation, they got food. I worked with them two days a week during the summer, and I found it to be one of the most fulfilling events in my life. So I figured, why not go ahead and take on this leadership responsibility? A lot of the time, a lot of the times, my students ask me, why do I need to learn math, science, or history? What is the benefit to me? So, what these students learned over the summer was that they needed this math to measure correctly and to build this tiny house, and they needed to understand science and trees and how the wood works. So, an internship provides them the opportunity for students... Sorry, I'm a little nervous. Provides an opportunity to define career goals, to develop the foundation in their workforce, and a career cluster that might interest them. We had a student who went to BOSI's this year, and she was interested in the medical field, and after doing that, she said, "I'm not really sure I want to do this. I think maybe education is the way to go." So an internship would be a great opportunity for a student to really develop their career foundation. It's also used as a graduation pathway. We have the four-plus-one C-DOS pathway, which is a career development and occupational studies commencement credential, which is used in conjunction with our internship program. So a student is placed in an internship for 54 hours, they get a half a credit for an elective, and they have to take college and career or a 12-hour classroom-based learning sessions. And through this... I don't know how to get this link going, but there's a link here to a very short video. Anyone can help you with this? Oh, there we go. Thank you. So this is a little something that we did over the summer. And this just really teaches our students to work together as a team, to build leadership skills. Everybody had to communicate when we moved this very heavy object. It took about 10 people, as you can see. It took us about 45 minutes to an hour to get this on the trailer, and another 40 minutes to get it up and secured. We documented our entire process with the students online. We had two students in 9th grade going into 10th grade, and we had two 11th graders going, three 11th graders going into their senior year, one of which has done outstanding things this year and is on target and on track to graduate. Some of our internship partnerships this year are McDonald's, Midtown Rising, Kingston Kids, the Boys and Girls Club, BBL here, has taken on two students this year, and they've done amazing work. New connection is Wild Earth for next year, Seetong Farm, and we have quite a bit of kids at the YMCA Farm Project. We've had a lot of kids start out there and continue on for more sessions, just volunteering and helping out at the farm. Here's some more pictures of our students. We have some from Tuohpe and from the YMCA Farm Project. We also had the Riverport Youth Boat Program that launched their boats last week, I believe it was, or the week before. One of the boats kind of sank, and one of them made it. So we have the C-DOS pathway. We have about 40 to 50 students this year that were identified that would be eligible for a C-DOS graduation pathway. We have about 30 students currently enrolled in our program, and the numbers are astonishing to me. It's grown so much. From last year, we had about five or six students, and this year we have about 30 to 35 total. We have about a handful of students who are just doing it for extracurricular activities, and we hope that this part of the program will grow next year. At the end of an internship, we really want students to be prepared with resumes, writing thank you letters, interviewing skills, cover letters, and if they decide that they want to change a career path or that what they thought is what they wanted to do, we want to make sure that we are really addressing that and getting them involved in something that they want to do. So the plans for the future at Kingston High School is to create a space within KHS where we could dedicate towards internship placements. I am working with some unpaid college-level interns, both in the bachelor's and master level of social work, and this will allow us to really get more students involved and working with them, hopefully, over the summer as well, and providing that really vulnerable gap between community connection and high school and that time off during the summer as well. And that's about it. Does anybody have any questions?
So, are these 35 students who are going to have internships over the summer?
We are hoping, we're looking at possibly placing 15 to 20 this summer, with the numbers that we have right now.
Are the possible seniors needed or are they...
So what we've found so far this year, I've had primarily juniors and seniors, mostly seniors this year because I work with the senior class, so we're really identifying who might be a C-DOS pathway with the global and the US regions. And then we are starting to identify students as they come in from the middle school on who might need a C-DOS pathway. So some students might just do an internship, and then later on might turn into a C-DOS Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McGary. So, the last couple of years, we've had a lot of conversations about restorative justice and restorative practices, which anybody who knows me knows and believes that's the direction we need the high school to go. But one of the things we learned last year at Tac D was, something that could get immediate feedback, was obviously looking at our curriculum and looking at the way we teach, and are we teaching material that is relevant to our students? I mean, one of the conversations was about the classics, and what's the definition of classics and whose classics they are. So, one of the things that I asked my teachers when the school year started this year was, can we start looking at what we're doing now and start being a lot more responsive to the students that are sitting in front of us? So, my staff did an amazing job, so I have about five or six teachers tonight that are going to quickly talk about some of the changes they did in their curriculum and their lessons to more enhance and engage more of our students so they feel part of what we're doing. So they're all going to come up right now. All of us, you sit right there, and then we'll look at it at a time. And Ms. Yella's going to go first.
Thank you. Good evening. And rather than talk at you, I'm going to engage you in my lesson. So, does everybody have a writing utensil? If you don't, I'll bring you one. And on the directions are on the board, on a little yellow card that I'm bringing around for you, I would like you to print your first name, last initial, and then you're going to number the little yellow piece of paper, one to three. First name, last initial at the top. You're going to number your card, one to three. And then for number one, you're going to draw or write a picture, phrase, or image that best describes your cultural heritage. That could be anything from ancestry, background, religion, race. Number two, you're going to draw or write a picture, phrase, or image about something that you really enjoy. Could be a hobby, interest, special skill, or talent that you may have. And number three, a picture symbol or a phrase about what you value most. When you've completed your game card, what you're going to engage in is a celebration of diversity and addressing some of the cultural issues that confront our students on a daily basis, and try to help break down the barriers that perpetuate racism, hatred, prejudice, and violence. This is an activity that I've been doing for several years, but certainly clued into the culturally responsive education efforts that we're trying to make. And in a moment, when I see you put your pens and pencils down, don't think too hard, and don't... Some of you look like incredible artists. And when I see your pens and pencils are down, I know you're ready to proceed. So you should have first name, last initial at the top of your yellow paper, you should have it numbered one through three, and a picture symbol word for each of the items. I appreciate the patience of my speedy writers and drawers. And I see that most of our pens and pencils are down. What I'm going to ask you to do at this point is I want you to turn to a partner, and I'm going to give you about 15 seconds apiece. You're going to introduce yourself and describe your pictures, symbols, or phrases to your partner. Go. Be sure to give each other a younger time to talk about your pictures, symbols, words, or phrases.
Something I enjoy, laughter.
And that was 15 seconds. You should have had 15 seconds apiece. If I can have your attention. If I can have your attention, class? Okay, now, this is where you're going to get a little interactive. What I want you to do is swap papers with your partner. Swap papers with your partner. Okay. Now, you're going to get a little exercise tonight, too. So when I say go, I want you to get up and sit next to a new partner. Go.
Watch somebody else's paper.
With your partner's paper. Yep, just quickly get with a new partner.
Don't move. You don't need to move.
Okay, everybody should be sitting with a different partner. Now, listen carefully. Your next step, everybody should be sitting with a new partner? Or a small group of three? You can do that. Okay, are we ready? When I say go, you have now one person removed from your original partner. When I say go, you're going to introduce your original partner on the card to your new partner. For 15 seconds, try to share equally. At this point, both partners should have been able to introduce their original partner to their new partner. And class, this is where it gets a little complicated. If I can have your attention one more time, please. You're going to get up and move one more time, but this gets tricky. When I say go, you're going to get up... Yes, swap papers. Swap papers with your partner. Wow, this is where it gets tricky. Pay attention. When I say go, you're going to get up, you're going to find a new partner that does not have your card and that you have not partnered with yet. Okay. Is everybody with a new partner? I think they really like their game cards. Okay, I'm going to ask you all to stop. Hang on to the card that you have. If you would like to return to your original seat, keep the card that you have, return to your seat, keep the card that you have, and return to your seat. Now, what I've just done is something that takes 42 minutes in a class period with a lot of additional direction. But it's one of the very first steps to helping people understand those barriers that create racism, prejudice, hatred, violence, and perpetuate the evils that most of us struggle with in our society today. And as these volatile issues come up in a classroom, simply having an understanding of the background and the experiences, what we value. So I'm going to ask you very quickly, you are now three people removed from your original partner. You had an opportunity to learn a little bit about each other, and I just want you to quickly go around and tell me what is on the card that you have for cultural heritage.
Greek.
Tomatoes.
Tomato, tomatoes?
What does it say?
Pizza?
Shama.
A shama?
Cross, and it says Lutheran.
Lutheran?
Pasta and noodles.
Pasta and noodles. Shama?
Jewish.
African-American? African-American? Cross? And a shama? Axe? Star of David? Small-town suburban? Italian food. And, pretty incredibly, just like a lot of the students, it's a lot of the things that we can all relate to, we can all connect to, and that we all have some kind of understanding about. One more time, very quickly, I want you to go around and tell me what your card said you value most.
Family.
Family. Family. Family. Family. Son. Family. Family and friends.
Family.
Family?
Family.
Family?
Family.
Family and friends. Travel? Family. Community? And the great outdoors. What is the word or the comment that you heard the most?
Family.
And so one of the things that this activity does for all of our students is help us to realize that we are all very different, but that unless we're 100% Native American or Afri... Excuse me, Native American Indian or Alaskan Eskimo, we're not from here. But our ancestors brought us here with a lot of different symbols and a lot of things that represent the power of who we are. In addition to that, as you saw, almost all of us, no matter where we come from, what our background is, we all have the same values. We all want the same things in life. And once we realize that, it's a lot easier to work as a team rather than against the incredible diversity that our high school represents. I want to leave you tonight with one last piece of food for thought, which is the Birmingham Pledge and a musical composition that we use to help break down those barriers that continue to contribute. So I do hope that this has some value and meaning for you as well in dealing with some of the difficult struggles that we face in today's society. And I thank you very much for playing along.
We were asked to create...
We were asked to create multicultural, cross-cultural lesson plans for our students. And so I decided to create one where a simulation that students would get involved in. I created two cultures, reserved two rooms, divided the class in half. And for the first day, half the class was put in one room, the other half the class was put in the other, and they learned their new cultures. And so one culture is the Wazoo, the other culture is the Ouzu. The Ouzu is a little easier, so I could differentiate, and students who struggled a little bit could take that particular culture. And it was very simple. So in the Ouzu culture, people with long hair were superior, so people with short hair had to bow to them. People with big noses were pretty, that was beautiful. And they did all their...it was a business transaction that they would engage in, and they had to do their business transactions sitting down. There was a discussion before they would do their transaction. The long-haired person would lead that discussion. You know, do you have any children? Do they have long hair? Do they have big noses, et cetera? And their business transaction was very simple. They put a poker chip on the table, and they either had an alpha or beta card, and they would put them down face down and turn them over. And if they matched, Person A got the chip, and if they didn't, Person B got the chip. And their activity was to try to get as many poker chips as possible. The other culture, the Wazoo, they did the opposite thing. So they did all their business standing up. They shook hands, where the Ozu did not shake hands. And they had a language, a very simple language. So hello was scratch your head, goodbye was scratch your stomach, yes was pointing up, no was pointing down. They had a language also, because their activity was to match sets of cards, match it by color and match it by number, depending how...and that would depend on how many points they got. And so the colors were like if they had a blue card, the word was la, the yellow card was yada, the blue was blah, I'm sorry. And if they wanted to exchange cards or trade, they had to use their language. So they had to say hello, scratch your stomach, they had to point to themselves, I want. And then if they wanted a five blue card, they had to say blah, blah, blah five times. And then they would talk in this language and, you know, in their transaction, trying to get as many sets as they could, and they would get points for that. So at its very core, you had two different cultures that were opposites of each other that were simply playing a business transaction, trying to get as many points. On the first day, they learned their culture. On the second day, they started, and observers from each culture went to the other culture. So three students from Ouzus would go to the Wazoo's, three Wazoo's would go to the Ouzus, they had name tags, and they were not allowed to engage, they were just only allowed to observe. After ten minutes, they went back to their home culture, and they began to tell their home culture what they saw. And there would be misconceptions and misinterpretations, and I don't know what they were doing. And they would, you know, explain to them what the other culture was like. Then I took five separate students from each culture, and they had to exist in the other culture. So now they had to go over to the other culture, and they had to engage with that culture and try to engage in that business transaction. And it was kind of funny, because the students from the Ouzus who went to the Wazoo's didn't know the language. They were given a set of cards, they didn't know what to do. And it's funny, I had students come up to me and say, I don't know what happened. I said, I went blah, 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 someone went yada, 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 they took my green five, they gave me a purple seven. What do I do? And I said, I don't know, why don't you go back and try to figure it out? And there was this culture shock, and it was interesting, because the foreign students kept together, because they were familiar with each other, they understood their own culture. Some of the host cultures would not do business with them, some would help them, some would marginalize them. And so they got to experience a lot of the same things that people experience in, you know, going to another country and trying to understand another culture, feeling lost, feeling marginalized. It just, you know, they got to feel what that was like. I got this from a U.S. Navy simulation that was created in the seventies to help U.S. Navy personnel to become sensitive to other cultures. And it was...it's used by corporations today. It's rather expensive, it's about a thousand dollars, so I decided to make my own, and it was a lot of fun. And they really liked it. And then the next day, you know, we had a question and answer, and they reflected, and it was a very nice experience for everybody.
Hi, good evening. There we go. Good evening, hello. I'm Christina Trusmanis. And the second semester of English X is actually, the theme is social and political change, social and political revolution. And that really lends itself to a wide variety of reading nonfiction from the civil rights movement. I've seen The Promised Land to some of the classics even, Lord of the Flies. And so we talk a lot about the idea of power coming from words and coming from your voice and being able to find that voice. And so the fourth quarter Common Assessment in Tenth Grade English is to give a persuasive speech about something, a topic that you're passionate about. And so we do let the students choose their topics, hopefully so that they can really do a little bit of research about something that they're interested in and be able to speak honestly and passionately about something. So being across the hall from Lauren with our new layout for Global, we found a really nice overlap, and we were able to do a collaboration that we're actually going to be in the auditorium with our classes on Friday with our honors classes. And so you want to talk about that?
The AP European History class and the honors 10 Global class have collaborated in our final exam is to identify a global issue, for example, a refugee crisis in Myanmar or medical care in Sierra Leone or women's rights in Saudi Arabia. They spent the year researching the issue, looking at existing issues, researching the history of their country, and ultimately proposing a micro-level solution intended to empower our students, showing that they are capable of change, not something that UNICEF is doing, but something that they could potentially do, because as 15 and 16, sometimes they lose sight of the fact that they do have the power. So Chris approached me, and our structure is that their final exam for my class is a memo, a formal written memo designed to be presented to an international panel of donors. And for Chris's class, the idea is that they are going to be presenting a persuasive speech to convince that panel of donors that they should fund their particular micro-solution. And again, that will be Friday in the auditorium all day, so hop by and see what they're solving.
And actually, just really quickly, while there are obviously many lessons, one of the best lessons is the idea of empathy and sort of listening to each other, because it's a dreaded assignment, the persuasive speech. When we talk about it in September, that you're going to have to do this in June, it's really, I mean, it causes a lot of stress and anxiety, regardless of the student's ability, background, public speaking is one of the number-one fears. And so ultimately, to end the year with something like that, the students end up leaving with a lot more confidence about having faced a fear, and also a lot of sort of patience and understanding and empathy that they're all kind of in the same boat. So that's actually really, it's just a nice community builder at the end of the year, too. Thank you.
All right, let's see if I can get this clicker to work here. Oh, of course, I shut it down, Mr. Reinhardt. Thank you. It's been a long day. You know better than me what goes now. Thank you. So I'm Cassandra Taylor, I'm a ninth-grade English teacher here at Kingston High School. And one of the things that I've pushed for the last three years is developing our research paper into something that really reflects diverse opinions and attitudes and experiences of our students. So during the second marking period, all of my English IX classes focus on social change in some form. And my English IX honors classes, my students are reading novels about major revolutions of the twentieth century. And in that class, we talk about different ideologies, and I try and give them, you know, the idea that big ideas create culture. And when we talk about society and culture, we're talking about people, we're talking about individuals. And if you can keep that in mind, you realize that things can change. And so as they research and read Animal Farm, Persepolis, they talk about different systems of government, capitalism, socialism, communism, revolutions, the reasons for them, and their outcomes, and then we tie that into current events. In my other English classes and my integrated English classes, we focus on a research paper that looks at major social justice movements. So we focus on the United States, but they pick topics ranging from African-American civil rights movement to LGBTQ rights movements to women's rights. And again, the students, I encourage them to tie it into something that they really feel strongly about, and then emphasize the fact that movements happen with young people. You don't get social change without young people, or people don't like to change, we're stuck in our ways. So when they actually get to see the historical part of this and tie it into the literature that we'll read and the articles that they read, they get to see the power of their own voice and their own potential for change, and hopefully look at things beyond just a charity model and get a passion for actually, you know, striving for in-depth systemic change in society. So my background in English and sociology come together perfectly for this assignment. And again, I'm always pushing forward in trying to change the literature, that's the next step. And that led my colleague Christina Bartley and I into creating the African-American Lit Corps, so we're also adding that element to it, too. Looking at canon, what we consider classics, and changing the narrative for our students so that they can see themselves represented in the literature that they read. Thank you.
Scared of the clicker? Oh, good, thank you. Good evening to you all, thank you for this opportunity. I'm Lisa Ellerby, I'm new to the high school on some levels, and I've been here before as well. So it's really funny that you just mentioned the power of my voice, because that was the name of an earlier course that was the springboard for bringing back this idea. I also teach ninth grade and eleventh, and we do a research project. So we want to teach those specific research skills, including MLA formatting and developing a thesis and learning Cornell outlining, and also learning this really strange thing called writing a letter. It's completely strange to them. So actually, I have about four people per class of twenty-seven that have actually ever written a letter or received one. It's really exciting for them. They developed this, we're talking here about...in Kingston, I was given my tiger poster, and it really reflects a lot of the ideas of this culturally responsive pedagogy. So you're really working with intrinsic motivation. They have free choice in what they're studying and whom they'll be writing to, and they learn proper formal letter format, but they also adapt it, because some students are writing to family members and some are writing to Your Majesty the Queen, so they have to learn some really different forms and share those. These definitely parallel the literature that we're working with. This year, we had people interviewing Kevin Cahill, one student got a letter back from Governor Cuomo. They were addressing everything from opioid crisis, alcohol addiction and support. And I don't know if some of the people in this room ever were asked some interview questions, because they spoke to a lot of the support teams and actually learned about what's available to them here as support, and really formed some great connections. They also started out the year being goofy, I knew they'd be doing this, and we wanted to be as foolish as possible to build some self-confidence and some self-efficacy, because public speaking is scary for them. And the support that came out of that was part of this idea. This is really something that's the core of, I think, what already happens here quite naturally. So you're seeing already socially conscious ideas being shown, students getting freedom of choice, and working with the ideas of being politically active as a citizen in things you truly care about, seeing that your voice matters in its paper form. And they also involve their families lots, really wonderful for them all around. Great opportunities, but thank you.
Hi, I'm Brittany Caserta, and I teach Global IX. So I like to bring into my classroom fun, I want the kids to feel welcome, I want them to feel heard, because I think that once they feel that way, everything else kind of just flows. So at the beginning of the year, I do a project on culture. And so for my honors class, I have them research a specific region of the world, since our course is geography-heavy. And I ask them to create a poster of a region, I ask them to research the geography and how that really influences someone's culture, and how living somewhere is going to impact kind of foods you eat, the kind of clothing you wear, the religion that you have, your traditions. So aside from the poster and the paper, we have a potluck at the end of the project, and it's a lot of fun. They bring in different food and drinks and all that. And then in my non-honors class, I ask them to reflect upon their own cultures. So they create a poster based on their beliefs, their traditions, and their understandings. And I want them to see that culture is not necessarily just where you live, culture is also your friend group, culture is also your family, culture is also the fact that we live in America, there's a million things that make up your culture. And they enjoy it, and we put the posters up, and they feel like they're having fun. So here are just a few of some of the honors projects that they created, some of the food that we eat. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You teach it a lot, and, you know, like I said, this is where I think we need to go as a school, change, looking at our curriculum, looking at how we teach, looking at our audience, and making sure we're meeting the needs of our students. Right now, Ms. Parker is going to bring up some of our PBS ambassadors. And as you know, another thing we're looking at is, you know, in a restorative way, is modeling in our positive behavior and how we interact with our students.
I'm Yvonne Parker. I am a math teacher, but also I am the advisor to the PBIS ambassadors, so I have two of them with me, I have Lauren and Damani. We've already met Damani. And there's a picture of my homeroom and a few of the other ambassadors that aren't in homeroom. So we're...I do have a bunch of them in homeroom, some of them are in multiple clubs, so they come to the ninth-grade meeting, I mean, the ninth-period meetings. So altogether, we have thirty-five. Oh, you have it? Okay, quick. So we came up with a mission statement to promote positive environment and a sense of belonging, and how we work that out is always changing. We always embrace brainstorming and coming up with ideas. Some of the things that we did this year, at first, they were very concerned about Hurricane victims, so we decided to raise money, we sold those bracelets on the left, and we decided to donate it to the Boys and Girls Club of Houston, because then it's a little bit of money, so we thought maybe it would help one family. We welcome new students. Whenever we have new students, we'll bring them a gift bag in homeroom, we give them tours, we sometimes pick them up and drop them off during periods if it's, you know, hard change. Door Wars was gifted to us by someone else, but it was a nice little fundraiser to get us started. And Tiger Paw Tuesday on KHSTV, maybe Damani can talk about that real quick.
Tiger Paw Tuesdays, we give teachers these paws that have these tiger paws, and then they pick a student that they believe is a role model in the school or something that they did positive, that the teachers deem... Yeah, one of the words. And then I go on KHSTV, and I pull out each name, we pull out each name, it's me and a couple of other PBIS ambassadors, and then we pull out each name, it's either respect, empathy, safety, teamwork, integrity. And we each take turns, and then we pull out each names, and then we say it, and then they get a chance to win something if they go to the principal office.
So that's a little something fun, just it's an easy way for teachers to acknowledge students making right choices, and then we, you know, they get their name, they get a little shout-out on KHSTV, and they get a little gift for doing what they should be doing, doing the right thing. So that's one cool thing that's been working well. Reverse Paw Week, that, we gave all the students a paw to give an adult in the building, and we had them write why. So it was really interesting to get those back. So that week, we pulled, instead of pulling student raffles, we pulled three adults and we bought them lunch. And so it was monitors and people from the cafeteria and security guards and teachers and secretaries, it's really interesting to see the students appreciate the adults in the building. Motivational Monday, Lauren, can you mention that? You've worked on that.
So a couple of ambassadors, we go down to the office and we talk on the announcement, and we give, we say like...
and we give, we say like inspirational quotes and we give out compliments and thank-yous that either came from students or from teachers. And we do that every Monday morning at about 7:40. So, yeah.
So in all the office suites, we have little papers that have compliment cards or thank-you cards. So anyone can write anyone a thank-you card and then they'll go read them on the PA system on Mondays along with their inspirational quotes that they've come up with for the week. So that's been working really, really well too. A few of the ambassadors, we went to George Washington and worked with their ambassadors. That was, that was great. We did it over winter Regents Week. It was very difficult though to choreograph because it was a field trip. But we did have a great experience. You were with me, both of you were with me? So that worked out well. And on the right, you can see the little compliment cards. Okay. Okay, so we brought in David Levine from the Empathy Institute once a month to train the students on leadership. And we, the students decided they wanted to have a wellness week. It went so well in the winter that we did it again in the spring. So for a full week, we polled people during lunch periods and had things going on. Some of them were outside the school and some of them were people right in the school that helped us. So we had yoga, come in and do yoga. We had mindfulness training. We had breathing. We did calligraphy. We did little Zen gardens. We did, there was 10 things, but they're not all coming to mind. So anyone, it was free to anyone during their lunch period. So the ambassadors were very supportive and they were there helping and we had people from the outside come in and help us. And that was so successful, we're going to figure out how we're going to make that work for next year. The students really wanted to do some kind of a gifting thing for the student, the community to be able to come in and make something. So they made Mother's Day crafts and Father's Day crafts. We opened that up to anyone in the building that needed or wanted to come. And so we did like friendship bracelets with beads and we dyed macaroni for the Mother's Day. And Father's Day, we made the power cord, power paracord bracelets. So that, that happened. That was good. And then we did take a field trip down to John Adams. John Adams is way ahead of us and a great inspiration for us. They are on like year five of having ambassadors, so we are up to 35 ambassadors and they have 150. So we did take eight students down and we sat and we brainstormed with them and they shared their knowledge and they gave us a tour. You were there, right?
The bus ride was cool. They welcomed us with breakfast and coffee and stuff like that. I feel like they had like a really good program and we just bounced ideas off each other. And it was a very good educational thing for our program also, so we could learn what they were doing because they've been doing it for so long and then like kind of incorporate it to what we were doing. So we can kind of catch up to what they're doing. And yeah, and then I think we're going to be progressing from here.
Yeah, yeah. It was nice to be able to collaborate with them and see what, what they're doing so we could, we can, we can get there faster, basically. Get a clicker, anything else? Okay, so the adults, the adult PBIS team put together the holiday store with the scholar dollars and we did help out with that. But that was a pretty massive undertaking, so I'm glad the adults did that. So that was another, another initiative where the students got the dollars from the teachers for lots of good things, anything. Maybe they all had their homework done or they were all on time and they were able to collect them and then they went to the holiday store and were able to purchase gifts for the holidays. So we helped with that. Winning Wednesdays, that's something relatively new and Damani is a big part of that also. One of our ambassadors, he's a jack-of-all-trades, he made us a spinner at home in his spare time. And we, we got interesting prizes. It took us a while to come up with good ones, better than just some ice cream. And we have, once a month, we have the teachers send us a student that really deserves acknowledgement for always making right choices. And then we spin this, three students get to spin the spinner on Wednesdays on KHSTV for, for prizes. We, we were not able to get to any other elementary schools, but it was a great idea and a great experience. So what we did instead was we made a video. So we made a video and we made little gift bags and we sent them to Chambers. They have 15 wobbles, what a good one looks like. And there are six at Miller that we're trying to connect with. So we've been trying to, next year, I would like to do a better job having us connect with the other ambassadors in all the other schools. Because I think that, what a great experience for them to be mentored by the adult ambassadors and then for us to keep that connection. So when they're at the high school, they're, they've been ambassadors all the way through. Last thing we're planning on this, is Field Day. So they're, they've been really, really working hard on this Field Day thing. It's going to be after school, but it starts tomorrow. So tomorrow is, we were able to have the field house after school to play Thunderball. So we've been promoting it to the whole, the whole high school, hoping that students will come and just have a good time and play Thunderball. The following day, Friday, we're doing different kinds of relay races in the field. So they've been working really hard and collaborating. They had to ask the athletic director for permission. They had to talk with Coach Burns, who's the head of the lead teacher for phys ed and choreograph all of this. So that was a lot of work. There's one more slide. Sorry. So our future plans, these are all for PBIS, that's all tier-one type stuff really where it's just, you know, we're trying to build a positive environment for the community. Tier-two is a little bit where you're focusing on a smaller group of students on a more intimate level. So peer mentoring, peer mediation, restorative justice circles. We do have peer court already in the building, but we've been working with Mr. Christian to kind of combine forces because we're, we seem to be really trying to do the same thing with the restorative justice piece. So maybe we can help each other out. And KHSCONACT is our check-in checkout, which is going to start next year with the ninth grade, the ninth grade at-risk students coming in. So the mentoring and the mediation, we're trying to get outside experts to come in and train us at first and then we'll, we'll be able to train the students afterwards. And the kids are spending so much time doing all of this work that it's surpassed what a club looks like. So we've been, we wrote curriculum to try to turn this into a half a credit course for social studies with Mr. Christian put in a lot of the social studies component, hoping that we can really turn, bring this into the school day and have them have some type of acknowledgement for all the hard work that they're doing. So that's, I guess, where we're at.
Thank you, Ms. Parker. Another initiative that came out of the BLT last year was a need for a writing center. As you know, a lot of colleges have those. So one of the goals this year, and Ms. Demosthenes did a lot of work on that, so she's going to talk to you about our new writing center at the high school.
Hi, I'm Annie Demosthenes. I'm a member of the English department here at Kingston High School and I'm one of four teachers who oversees the writing center during the lunch periods each day. You can, I think, possibly see our mission statement up there. Essentially, we are there to support all of our students, ninth, 10th, 11th and 12th grade of any ability level from any class on any writing that they have and want help with. We've had students come to work on essays for social studies class and labs for science class. We've had kids bring in their college application essays or ask us for help to fill out a job application. So we're really open and available to offer support for any need possible. And I want to thank all of you. It was last spring that you gave this project the green light. And I think that it has helped to distinguish this district as a district that is there to do whatever it takes to offer as much support as possible for our writers, not only during their time here at Kingston High School, but for also for their future endeavors as well. I think that's about it.
Thank you, Ms. Demosthenes. The last slide is, as you can see, just the first year we did it, there was already 2,000 tutoring sessions for our writing center. So, real quick, I just want to hit, I know it's been a while and I appreciate your patience, but there's a lot of amazing things going on in the high school and I'm not really sure if people in the community all know everything that's happening. So just a couple of quick highlights. We had the Black Stories Matters. If you had a chance to come that night, that was an amazing opportunity. I'm so proud of our students getting up there. Most of you were here the first day that we, we opened the new cafeteria. Our Make-A-Wish raised $619 for some of our students and Ms. Manley, who retired tonight, that was one of her projects. As you know, a lot of our students, especially our at-risk students, get here at 7:40 in the morning and they leave 7 o'clock at night. We can get most of them breakfast and lunch. A lot of our students don't get dinner. So about nine or 10 weeks ago, we started a sign-up where every faculty member would adopt the night to ride dinner. So like tonight, one of our math teachers dropped off salad and chili. So we've had this going, it's been very successful, so we're going to look to continue. You know, it's pretty tough to learn at 7 o'clock at night if you haven't eaten all day. So that, that was very successful. We're real proud of that. If you had a chance to school play this year, the Vida was, was just amazing. We had our first graduate of today's students, tomorrow's teachers. That's a program we brought in. We're going to reap the benefits obviously this down the road. We get an opportunity to look at a more diverse teaching population as well as give our students an opportunity in a different career. As you know, the mental health of Kingston is very fortunate. They help us a lot. They got us our teachers for PBIS. This last weekend, they had the kickball games at Deed Stadium. Once again, it's just an amazing opportunity for our students and our staff to work together for a great cause. They were talking about the, the Health and Wellness Week. As you know, we now have a wrestling room, but during the day, we're able to do yoga classes down there. So we're using multiple rooms for multiple purposes to meet the needs of a lot of our students. And real quickly, it's hard to believe that that was a little over a year ago. So real quick, I know I appreciate your patience, but there's a lot that I wanted the board to see, what our staff is doing this year. And with that, I can't say enough of what our staff did. We opened up a brand-new high school. We've lived through two or three years of construction. And like I tell everybody, I truly believe we have the best school in this part of New York State. When you look at what we do, you saw what my staff was able to create in just one year about meeting the needs of our students and talking about culture and having those tough conversations. You see what PBIS is trying to do, restorative justice and restorative practices. You know, and so I'm very fortunate that I have the best teaching staff and the best staff overall anywhere in New York State, in my opinion. Thank you. Any questions?
Now any questions?
Now any questions? Yes?
I don't have a question, but I just want to congratulate you all on what we so hard to constantly improve and meet needs of the students. And I have to say, it's a shout-out to you to be such great leaders, to get them results that you get with your staff and your, you know, your tuition staff and all of your staff at the school. So thank you.
It's an honor to have them. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
I do want to point out that Ms. Parker is not once mentioning graduation rate, so I'm going to mention graduation rate. As you know, that's all I talk about is graduation rate. Call Mr. Reinhardt once a week and ask him what the graduation rate is going to be. So each year, for the last three years, we've had the highest graduation rate in the history of Kingston High School. And our subgroups are the highest they've been in the history of Kingston High School. So like, thank Mr. Reinhardt and his team for, you know, for really jumping on board that understanding where our students need, we look at that night school and the, and the potluck night school, that's what it's about. Those are the kids who definitely credit recovery. The kids who fell behind and then they're trying to catching them up and getting them across the stage. So our goal, you know, we're here to educate aspiring graduates and graduate is the part that I always like to focus on, talk about. In fact, we all know, students who graduate go on to do things, you know, that graduation rate is the most important rate for our students to clear. So we need to continue to push that. And I know Mr. Reinhardt's team and I see, to see go back there and he hears it too, the graduation rate all the time and they're, they're doing tremendous things. So thank you, Mr. Reinhardt and the faculty and staff for, I've got to focus on our kids. Okay, I have one more, well, two more presentations to leave. I'm sorry. And, but you all know Mr. Flapper and one of the things he is known for is his brevity. So I will bring you those.
Thank you very much. Any questions? It is a shirt because we have, and I also want to give a shout-out, as was said, to the staff of Kingston City School, of the high school, for their patience and Mr. Reinhardt in particular. He has done nothing but been very cooperative about this whole project. And we are literally in the last steps going out the door south. And so, right now, this, just a few quick pictures. This is the flooring going down. All the tile is all the way to the new entry. I couldn't walk on it, they're going to grout it today. They were grabbing it today. That's a window out to the new plaza entranceway. On the outside, it looks like it's been looking like for the last couple of weeks, but all the nichihaw panels are up. They just left all the protecting, protected covering on it so as they were pouring concrete so we didn't do any damage to it. Concrete was being poured all week. The plaza is completely poured, all the sidewalks are poured, curbs are poured. We, we've been rejuvenating the outside of the building. We're putting new dampers on the outside of the building and cleaning everything up. These rooms are the rooms right above us. These rooms are completely done. I also want to thank our custodial staff. They're following right behind the construction workers. They're not waiting until summertime. They have all the floors waxed. They have all the windows cleaned, desks cleaned, and those classrooms are ready to go right now. Except for the furniture, which is coming on July 7th, I believe. Again, just some more concrete today. They were still pouring, the sidewalk from Andrews Street all the way over to O'Reilly Street was poured today. And the picture on the front, top left, is the plaza. It's completely poured now. Inside, finishes are done, carpet's done. We are, we are very, very close to walking out the door with the last construction work. And just to add to what, what we're doing here, my guys are doing all of this stuff this summer. And that's really a short list because some things have been added and some things have been taken away. But these are our main goals for this year, for this summer, to finish up. That's about it. Any questions? Yay!
After the tornado, I mean, have you had a lot of people calling you and ask about whether or not you're going to be standing for the tornado?
Yes, actually, one of the reasons that there are some classrooms with columns in them, and these columns are in this room right here, is because all buildings built in New York State now have to meet a certain standard for hurricane and wind load. And so these columns were put in for that. They're actually cross-protection. Even though they look vertical, the wide one right there is actually an X in the wall. When you go to the library, they were, they were kind of inventive. They actually made a K out of, out of the brace. And so there's bookshelves in the K. But the building has been brought up to modern standards as, as the wings were, and that's part of code. And all the glass that it's, that's exterior on the front has, is tempered glass and it also has to meet the standard of wind shear. And I don't know the exact wind velocity, but it definitely, it definitely takes tornado winds.
Can you just, I know there's been some change in, it was supposed to be paving this week and then it's going to be next week. Now you just, what's that sort of paving?
So, so what happened was we lost a couple of days to rain and contractors bid a job to do it in a very short period of time. So the concrete work had to be done before the blacktop work. And they lost probably four days to rain. They've made up one day and we were going to start this week and go into next week, but next week is Regents Week. So we decided to hold off on Regents Week because there's four different bus schedules with people coming and going, the noise on site and all that. So, so the week of the 20, whatever that is, I'm trying to think of what next week is, the following week is, is when we're going to start that.
The week after Regents?
The week after Regents exams is when we're gonna start. Right. And so that, that is, we see it as about a four-day process and it'll be completely done. One more comment? I would like to go first. All that... One more comment. I would like to go first. All that presentation was awesome, and I just come up with a couple of...[603.82][603.82][laughter]
Okay. Next on the superintendent's report is the superintendent. So one of the things we wanted to talk about is our preschool program that we're looking to open in September of 2019. So I wanted to give the board, we've been working very hard, I think, Dr. Felicello and her team, for really doing the lion's share of this work. But this is our vision. I wanna also, before we get started, say, this is our vision right now. There are things that could change between now and our opening in September of 2019, but this is where we see ourselves going with our pre-K center at the Mahar Elementary School. First of all, let's talk about why. And so, why are we doing this? Why are we having this pre-K center over at Mahar, so students who aren't really, they're not really compelled to come to school yet? Well, in 2017, 2018, Kingston City School District allocated about 265 slots for Universal Pre-K, which is a state-funded 3K. And we serve 265 students between our 13 community partners and two classes in our school district as well. But when we look at our enrollment, our live births and our enrollment projections, in 2015, there were 580 live births. In 2016, 582. In 2017, 560. In 2018, 585. These are the students who we've been seeing coming in in 2019 and beyond into our schools, that maybe we could serve more of those students, those four-year-olds with a new center. So at 265 live births, we're still missing more than 300 four-year-olds. All the research tells us, if we reach our four-year-olds, our four-year-olds will be more successful when they get into school. So pre-K is without a doubt, you know, to me, it's one of those things I say all the time, that it's one of those golden ticket, one of those golden-ticket items. And we wanna have pre-K and reach as many of our four-year-olds in Kingston City School District as we can. Right now, we're reaching half. Our program will not be able to get us to all of our students, but we will have four classrooms to start with the possibility of expanding to six within, you know, within a very short period of time. It's a big name there. About the preschool, we're gonna be opening in 2019, like I just said, with four classrooms to go to six. Now, the pre-K has, we have, there are a lot of standards around pre-K and requirements. We will have a maximum of 18 students. The best thing to have a teacher and a teacher assistant in every classroom. Four-year-olds students are eligible. One of the differences with us and some of our partners, we'll be looking to really serve some of our students who aren't necessarily served. We're looking to serve students who are receiving free reduced lunch. We're looking at our ENL students, who's a population which is growing tremendously. And I think getting them that jumpstart into kindergarten is very important. So we are looking to provide transportation for our students. Breakfast and lunch obviously will be served. And it's a full-day program. Two big keys, here are the two big keys. Transportation, full-day program. That's things parents wanna see. So these are things we want to provide for the new four-year-olds in Kingston City School District. Also, we wanna be a little progressive here. You heard me say before, we like to, we wanna be progressive and offer different things. And we did that with chambers this year. We do that through Montessori. So we also looking to be progressive at our pre-K centers. So we're looking at having two different options in the school. We are gonna have traditional classrooms for our preschoolers and two dual-language bilingual education classrooms. So there's a lot of different things going on with dual language and working with students. But this, as Dr. Felicello said, this is the Ferrari of programs for dual-language in schools. And we really see this starting here and growing it through our district as we move forward. So very simple example, dual language, what it really means is, we're teaching two students in two languages at one time, more or less. Day one, we teach in English, or Spanish. Day two, they're taught in English. Day three, Spanish, four, English, and so on and so forth. So the same lesson is taught in two different languages, really immersing the students in that language for either side. So English students are learning Spanish, Spanish-speaking students are learning English. So the classrooms, the focus, keeping ourselves within the New York State standards. I know when we talk about pre-K, you're saying, really, you're gonna talk about standards with four-year-olds, but they really are standards, and we really wanna make sure that they're ready to jump into fifth grade, or into kindergarten. One of the things we do see is that our kindergartners who are coming in from our community partners or our pre-K programs are more prepared to start kindergarten. Socially more prepared, academically more prepared. We want all of our students to come that way. Social emotional needs, a focus of our district. Play, a big part, four-year-olds. Obviously, we want them to learn through play and just have free-form play. Traditional preschool centers, we also use, you know, art center, writing, dramatic play, block area, those kind of things. So it'd be a very traditional look, but with a more progressive curriculum and style. This is a sample schedule of our traditional school, of how we'll be operating. I know that Dr. Felicello and her team got into the mini-grid here and really created the schedule, but this is, this could change. So we're gonna look to our teachers to talk to them about how you see the day working absolutely. But this is how we see our, the type of things we're offering in the time periods that we're offering. Bilingual, we're setting, to switch back and forth. One of the things we really use bilingual staff. Teachers are certified, they're certified to teach these classes. And we've done some recruitment. Here's a picture of a group of students that came up to visit us here. It came to them from CUNY with T-SOL certification, some of them dual-certified. We took them here. They came, saw Kingston High School, they saw our district. They also were lucky enough to get a little tour of Kingston to see why maybe they would like to come move here and live in Kingston and work with us. It was really nice to meet them, and I think they were very excited and very energetic group of students. So hopefully, we will see some of them applying in the years to come. We're also gonna get the community involved. We're trying to do the outreach outreach to make sure people know we're here. So what are we doing and are we here? We are here. And we have our pop group, it's Parents of Preschoolers. We had our first open house a couple of months ago. And I didn't have huge expectations. I know that our team did. So I got there, I thought we'd have a handful of people. We had a lot of young people, a lot of parents and four-year-olds, two-year-olds, three-year-olds coming through the door to visit the program. I give Mr. Clapper and his team a lot of credit. They created one of the rooms for us. They cleaned out the building. As you know, the building hasn't been started, the construction yet, or the renovations. But Mr. Flapper's team really made a brand-new classroom, and we don't have to do any work there for the parents to come in and take a look. And we had storytime. They did some activities. Parents got to look around, see what was going on. It was just a really good morning. And they do also want to mention that we have beautiful furnishings in there that we donated to us from Rudahoff, from Creative Play Things, our community play things. So we have a real functional, high-end classroom up in there. So it was really a very good debt. That's where we are. And that's what we're, we're gonna continue with our community outreach, working to make sure people know we're here, making sure that people, the people that we want to target into our program and signing up for this preschool, which we're planning to open in September of 2019. So I will take questions.
What is the community outreach that you're doing? How are you doing? Or how are you posting?
Yeah, well, we're gonna do it several different ways. I mean, obviously, our traditional way of communicating, it's funny to say traditional, because most people think it's paper, but our traditional way is our website, our electronic communication. But really, we're trying to find someone, some boots on the ground. Someone who knows the community, the community knows, who can be out there knocking on doors, letting people know that. So that's what we're gonna, this summer, we're hoping to identify a few of those people that can help us and bring them on board, to help us get out there. We're really talking about knocking on doors to make sure the parents know, we're here, come on over.
Now, is there any possibility that we can use, for example, some of our high school students to do some of that?
Yeah. And we're also using the data that we have from the school district for that as well. So we're looking to see the high school students who we identified, they have younger siblings. So we can make sure that through that student, we can communicate with the parents and say, no, or even our elementary students, hey, we have the, we do have this program here. So yeah, yes, I think using those community resources, people might, it has to be part of it. The traditional will get some people, it's not gonna get everybody.
I usually focus on play. I mean, there's a lot of research about how kids learn best in play. I mean, I don't know what that means. And I think we might be standard, because I know it's sense of action. I think that we can reach a lot of those areas in an experiential kind of play-based way. So I'm really hopeful that we'll see a lot of that as they're drawn and centered and that kind of stuff. And maybe the waters are older, and, um, it's something that I can meet. But I think that, you know, I'm hopeful that we won't see a lot of workshops in this.
I don't, I don't think we're gonna see any workshops.
My question is, so will parents enroll to choose if they want to enroll in a program or traditional?
Yeah, I think we have to determine how we're gonna enroll, you know, at that point. Obviously, there's, it will depend on how many ESL students we have, you know, how many classes we can. If we only have enough for one class, we can't do a language and two. But we're, we're gonna Pepsi, and it may end up being some type of lottery. We may be overbooked as pre-K in general. But we do have the expansion of two other classrooms. So if one of those classrooms, if we have, if we can get the staff, faculty and staff, and one of those other classrooms could be a dual-language bilingual program also. So we have some opportunities for growth.
Is there gonna be a lot of, you know, there's, I'm not sure what that concept is.
Yeah. I think that is, as I said, it's the Ferrari.
My question is, Connor, maybe after the movement child, the community outreach should sure, starting in the rise, is utilize some of the community organizations that have access, like the local DSS, Community Action, a lot of these other organizations that have established relationships. It's great that we'll have somebody that's going out and knocking on the doors, but they think it's important to increase the community knowledge, the community, and also some of our old folks.
Well, right. And getting the people that maybe already are knocking on doors to carry our message with them when they're knocking.
Not my first.
I've really been very excited when I saw this presentation about the dual-language program. I think it's just gonna have a tremendous impact on students, on four-year-olds. As well as having English as a second language, we're gonna have, you know, a subgroup, we're not gonna be a subgroup, we're gonna be a co-equal group, because they're gonna be a group of Spanish as a second language. And they're all gonna be language-wise. And I think that's just gonna be a tremendous, have a tremendous impact on their social, emotional learning, health, you know, which can really prepare them, propel them into success in kindergarten and elementary school.
Just wanna make a comment. I will be setting up, you know, resorting, you know, bilingual classes, as I know it's affecting, you know, PAA has established bilingual classes for first grade. So for us starting this, you know, early age, I think we're gonna be present, you know, present with ideas which many will follow.
And then, of course, yeah, it's because you have a role that I don't think I would continue that. And I kind of know that that's a big question, but I imagine that we continue up that, we start this little language in pre-k, and how we continue that, because it's a tough, it's a tough.
Right. We, that has been a lot of the conversation, as you know, and with our programs and chambers that we had this year, which isn't quite as complete as this will be, we will be, you know, we need to, we need to roll those up and how we do that and across that. And I think one of the things that we need to focus on is, they think it's extra, but it's not going to be extra. It's going to be instead of what we're doing now, kind of as we move, a lot of places, as we move forward. So it's not, it's not really extra. I mean, it might be a first, but eventually, this is gonna be how we do business. So it's not really gonna be an expanded, expansion of what we do.
That's very exciting.
Thank you.[1435.73][1435.73][applause]
Is the name set in stone, the owl?
No.
A little tired.
Well, we liked the little owl because of Mahar. We liked the little owl because Mahar was the owl, the school, which managed to have an owl prior to the closure. That concludes the superintendent's report.
Ninety minutes.
We just choose the consent agenda. Are there any resolutions that we have to do besides the consent agenda?
Okay, we're not on to the motions of acceptance agenda.
Second.
All those in favor of accepting the consent agenda, please, if I was saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extensions.
Okay. Just a quick comment on the consent agenda. We do have several appointments of new teachers. And as you know, we're in the hiring process, and we're getting, we've been trying to get a jump on it and hire some teachers. We are lucky enough to have one of them here tonight. And I wanted to introduce her to the board. Kiana Williams is here in the back. Please stand up.[1531.94][1531.94][applause] While Kiana is with us now, she's officially with us, Kingston High School, she'll be teaching now. Welcome.
We're trying to see the donations, if they want to donate.
We have D52, whereas the Kingston School District is a recipient of a generous donation from EC Meyer PTA in the amount of $140. We have D53, whereas the MC Miller Craft Store, which is donate a cello storage rack to the Miller Middle School Music Department. We have D55, whereas Kingston High School is a recipient of a generous grant award from the Community Foundation of Hudson Valley in the amount of $1,116. And last but not least, we have D56, whereas it is the desire of Susan Bosch to establish a scholarship fund in honor of her husband Eli Bosch's 70th birthday. And this scholarship fund shall be established in the amount of $2,500, and an award shall be presented annually for $500 to a student who has shown interest in the area of law and plans to study at a New York State school. That's great. Thank you.
And that concludes the Board of Education. We have two committees reporting out from this meeting, first, the Policy Committee, and I'll turn to Mrs. Collins.
Okay, well, since I think we've made, this is a pretty long set of things that we've accomplished, our West Policy Committee, we're trying to, we met on Friday, June 1st. And if you look at our agenda, we have five policies up for discussion, including the graduation ceremonies and regulations, student health services, education, policy, which are getting renewed, fund balance, which is a new policy worked to us by the business office, and the board. And a charging of school meals at the meeting. We had Mr. Edgar Corelli with us to emphasize and work as far as school service. So those are on the agenda for first years. We have one, second, we have policies, 1225, student personal expression, I've gone over that before last meeting. And then we have two, adoption, we see 5550, student privacy, 7265. So with that said, I'd like you to go through policies for adoption decisions.
Any discussion? All those in favor of policy adoption for 5550, student privacy, 7265, please, if you can say aye. Opposed, and extensions. Yes. Thank you. Any other questions?
I have a question about children, you know, I really, I was so, I was thinking of this school lunch, which I, I really appreciate the child that's sitting there, about making sure that it's not conspicuous, who's spending their lunch, and if a child hasn't been able to pay or hasn't, but now it's something that is not advertised. So I really appreciate the vaccine policies. I'm wondering, if the student, we, is, we have, with their account is having to put up, are they allowed to have a, a lunch, or can they only get the lunch? We discussed this with the board, and Mr. Corelli discussed that as well. Somebody wants to?
Yes, they do.
Mr. Olson.
Yes, they get a, right? Yes. They get a, they get the full, they take the snacks on part, but they get the full. There's no replacement of a cheese sandwich at the burger.
That was part of the, part of the state budget this year. That was covered formally.
So you have a question?
I'd like to find it.
I'd like to find it. My question?
First thing, a presentation of the risk assessment from our internal auditor and a presentation of the findings on the purchasing audit. And that's actually included in separately. So, and then we'll use the trade report and the claims auditor report. So I'd like to move PLE 81 and PLE 82 together to the claims auditor, except the claims auditor report, trade report for April.
Okay, all of the things are accepting, the trade report, claims auditor report.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
I neglected, I should have pulled D-81. D-81, the, the resolved board of education, hereby accepts the purchasing process audit, audit report, and corrective action plan. That should be amended, that should have been amended to say, "and approves the corrective action plan." The corrective action plan has to be approved by the year, I believe. If it says "self," it doesn't say "self," but it should say "self." So we amend that. PLE, uh, D-81. It's on page nine. Except for, it should say "proves" instead of "sets." Well, it accepts the audit report and approves the corrective audit.
All those in favor of the resolution is amended? We accept the trade report and approve the internal auditor and corrective action. Everybody in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions?
My question is, who definitely prefers?
That's my right. It is now, we're good. All right, which brings us to old business, serial business, or any trust you would like to raise?
I'm sorry, teaching a learning.
It's not on the agenda.
I think I rattled.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you very much. I apologize.
Yeah, go ahead.
Actually, I'm going to defer to the bird on that, this is. He was a bird. I've also meant that bird a few times. They actually were in and also presented to the principals several months ago. Superintendent was providing a draft letter that we are carrying right now. So that should break the pay couple pairs.
Any old businesses? That new business, you know, old business? Okay, and then move on to new business? And the new business, who's interested in that, Mr. Jordan?
I watched a bit of Betsy Ross's testimony in Congress yesterday, and I tried to keep my head from rolling up. But it's very clear that she's making every effort to undermine public education in this country. I did have a conversation with somebody at this club to see if they had anything regarding that. And the fact that children are being separated from their parents on the border, which I think as a board member, as all of us following education are just outraged by, there's nothing in that issue on the children. But there has been, there has been work done since May on opposition to any proposal that we put in public dollars to support non-public schools and pose all tax-dated budget plans. And even though that was introduced in May, they have not done anything on that. But you can go to NISTA site, and you can generate a letter in oppositions for both the House Resolution 5199 and the Senate Resolution 2517. So if you want to just take a moment and go to NISTA and fill that out, at least that will generate some opposition, some power of war for that. I've also spoken to Senator Schumer, and I would encourage everybody who is a supporter of public education to do that, as well as express your horror at letters happening to children in this country and like that. So I would just encourage everyone.
Any other new business? Board members, answers? Don't forget, June 13th, there's a tour. The head school, again, will be there, the meeting, and the tour. For offices, the facilities committee on steering committee, and for facilities, kind of the first thing. Where I do a question, and I'm not in the other meeting this year, we'll be having a meeting, but it will be about a half hour long, following the tour. Tourists first, meeting remain lobby at 3:30. A brief review of the facilities. Any other announcements?
Can I just make a couple of announcements?
Yeah.
Just a few things. On our website, there's a comprehensive list of all things going on, but as you all know, June is things-going-on month. Just to give you a quick rundown, the, some of the big things. Middle school moving-up ceremonies, they are going from June 20th and 21st, 20th for Miller, and 21st for J. Watson Bailey. Miller will be at 3:00 in the afternoon, and J. Watson Bailey will be 1:00 in the afternoon. So it's a little bit different with the, with the being after school, but it's going to work out well. Kingston High School has several events, since we all announced those. Academic Awards is just coming Monday night, 7:00 right here. Athletic Awards tonight is the 14th at 6:00. Do you need a PEC public student competition, which I know many of you love and go to every year, at SUNY Ulster, the Stone Ridge Campus, not our campus here, is at 7:00 p.m. on the 14th. Baccalaureate is at the Mount Academy, the 18th at 6:30. We have our senior walk at the end at 1:15. At the elementary schools at 2:15, middle schools at 1:15, elementary schools at 2:15. We'll be also on the 18th, so that's when our students are seeing, wear their captain gown, they go back to the school, their elementary school, and they go through it, the kids cannot see it. And actually, it's even cuter than it sounds. And graduation, of course, is June 22nd at Deed Stadium, 5:00 in the Villanobrye. But the, and again, the elementary moving-up ceremonies are all on our website. I won't continue to review them, but they're all there. So I'll make sure, I will cut and paste that and copy it, send it to you in email as well, just so you have some reminders of all things that are going on. I do also, I missed one thing, because this one, this one sounds like a lot of fun. The 14th at Miller, I believe at 6:00, is the food truck competition, which is Bailey and Miller against each other kind of thing, in a food truck competition. And I was told that the last one was great, and it's one of those don't-miss kind of events, so.
So can you sum that up to us in the email?
Yes, yeah. Yes.
Which brings us to public participation opportunity number two. Is there anyone who would like to address the board? Please approach the podium, you'll get to two minutes. Mr. Colonel will let me know when you're approaching the two minutes, exciting conversation. Policies on the podium. Please, if anyone would like to address the board right now, please approach the podium. Okay, so you know takers? How much you want to keep them?
Some of them.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.